I'd like to start the information regarding the New Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act at Lenox Township, August 9th, at 7 o'clock. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to our Planner, Mr. Steve Kassen, and our Attorney, Mr. Steve Joppick. I would ask if you have any questions or comments, to please hold them until the end. I won't let them get through their presentation, and then we'll be open to any questions and comments by the public, please. Mr. Kassen?
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is actually our second Town Hall meeting. We had one approximately six weeks ago, I believe it was, where we just gathered information and talked to the public a little bit about the Act itself and some of the possibilities that the Township has, and whether they're going to opt-in, opt-out, or, you know, well, basically those two, opt-in or opt-out. We're going to go a little deeper tonight in regards to, we're going to talk about the types of facilities that the Act allows, and the options for the Township on what they can and cannot do. So, I'd like to start with the first slide, and this is... It's hard to see, but basically, this is some illegal operations that are around the area. And what has happened is they've brought it up in various condos, residences, basements and that, and many of them have been causing lots of problems in terms of fire problems, nuisances and that. And what we're really trying to do is, what the Act is trying to do, is to regulate the marijuana industry, and hopefully if a community does it right, and annex requirements to control the industry and that, we can avoid these types of uses in the future. Mr. Joppick is here, he's our attorney, and I'm asking him to jump in on any opportunity that he's... I'm not an attorney, so... The Act itself is... There was the PA 281, that's created the regulatory structure, and that's for the five different types of medical marijuana facilities. And it also provided immunity for various prosecution penalties under state law ordinances, and does not change existing immunity for qualified patients and registered caregivers. That was the one Act. And then we have PA 282, which basically controlled the industry by creating a statewide internet-based seed-to-sale tracking system, and required a licensing for each of those five categories that we will be talking about.
Steve?
Yes?
Can I interject real quick?
Absolutely.
You know, it might be helpful if we find out, you know, how many folks were here for the first meeting?
Yeah, that would be great.
The first open house that we had. If you were here for that first open house, can you raise your hand? Okay, so we have a number of new people that are present, so...
Would you like to go through the Act then? More in detail?
Well, I was thinking it might be a good idea for us to maybe explain who we are and our experiences and background a little bit, like we did last time, for those who weren't here last time. So, if you want me to start?
Please.
I'll start. Okay. My name is Steve Joppick, Township Attorney here for a number of years, and I work at a firm called Johnson, Rosati, Schultz &amp; Joppick. We are 28 attorneys, all 28 of us practice what's called municipal law, which means we're city, village, and township attorneys. We represent cities, villages, and townships. As general counsel in the metro Detroit area, primarily is where we do our general counsel, meaning we're township attorneys, city attorneys and so forth, but we also do special counsel work for communities, and litigation work for communities across the state of Michigan out of our firm. All 28 of us, that's what we do. We represent communities. So, our business is to know all of the things that are coming up as best we can, and the statutes, this being one of them. The new thing is, is things are evolving, to attend seminars, and actually give seminars, and write materials on it, all of which I've done, and many attorneys in my firm have done regarding this particular issue. We've been very involved with it since the original Act went into place by the initiative that was put before the voters many years ago. And with this new law coming up, of course, we saw it coming down the pipe, and got ourselves educated, and have continued to track it, and attended many seminars on it, and given some seminars and so forth. So, you know, we do everything, you know, a lot of the aspects of this regulation relate to zoning and land use in the communities, and also relate to licensing in the communities and at the state level. I liken it in many ways to the Liquor Control Commission, which we've had in our state for many, many years. And there's a commission established in Lansing, and there's also... I think my battery is... So, there's also local regulations of liquor control, and that's another area that we're experiencing. I've been practicing law since 1994, so I guess that would make it about 23 years now. All of my career has been spent working in municipal law, representing communities, just like Lenox Township. And a lot of what is coming through on the medical marijuana front is new, interesting, and something that communities across Michigan are working with, and figuring out how to handle. And that's what we're here to discuss. And Steve is much more experienced than I in Hill.
My name is Steve Kassen, I'm the Township Planner. My background, I've served over 40 years in urban planning, at the local and county level. I was 25 years in Clinton Township, and 15 years as the Director of Planning and Economic Development for the County of McComb. Approximately four months ago, the Township Board here gave me the opportunity, and I gratefully accepted, the opportunity to serve as their Township Planner during my so-called retirement years. And so, my background is, as Stephen indicated, planning and zoning issues, land use planning, and a lot of this has to do with zoning. I had indicated last time that 20, 30 years ago, we were dealing with such issues of where to put pinball arcades, and big things like that, or tattoo parlors, never in my wildest imagination, that I believed that we'd be regulating marijuana facilities. But, things have changed, and we're here, and that's one of our reasons we're here, is to listen to the public and see how they would like the Township to proceed. So, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. Does the Township Board want to introduce themselves?
I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Thomas Second First Scott, that's my middle name. I'm a trustee here at Lenox Township, and I'm learning just like you are, so I'm listening to these two informed gentlemen, and we'll make our decision based on what you people want. We work for you, so you're going to point us in the right direction, and we'll do what we have to do to benefit the Township.
I'm Michelle Burley, I'm a trustee.
Lilian Handel, I'm the clerk.
Kathy Hutter, I'm the supervisor.
I'm Ron Trombley, Township Supervisor. And if I could, real quick, just the reason for this second Town Hall meeting, we have had an overwhelming response to our first informational meeting regarding medicinal marijuana. I think our response was overwhelmingly pro and favorable. We had one comment that was against having it in residential areas, and I think across the board that night, that was the number one thing that came through everything, is that everybody wants it away from the residential areas, away from our schools, kids, things of that nature, and they want it in a controlled area. Overwhelmingly, I think that's what we took from that first meeting, so that is why we're having the second meeting, to go forward with even more information and to find out more from the public. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Kassen.
Could you jump to the next slide? The RICS give us the opportunity to approve, not approve, opt-out of, and five different categories: grower, processor, transporter, provisioning center, which is a sales dispensary, and safety compliance. Each one of these have different regulations and definitions under the state law, and the Township has their choice on whether to allow any of them, all of them, or a number of them. Go to the next slide. Grower. This growing license that could be offered at the state, or will be offered at the state, is for Class A, B, or C licenses, 500 plants, 1,000 plants, or 1,500. And again, the Township has the ability to decide if they want any of those, all of those, one of those, all of those. And what that does is authorizes grower-to-grower transactions of marijuana seeds or plants. It also permits sales other than the seeds to a processing or provisioning center, which we'll talk about. All transporting has to utilize a secure transporter, which we'll talk about in a bit. And here's an important thing, as far as zoning is concerned, the state RICS specify that a community can only allow growing operations in industrial or agricultural zones. Next slide, this guy gives you some examples that I was able to pull, and Mr. Joppick's office was able to pull off the internet, that shows some growing facilities. Most of them were very nicely done. These are in other states, and I believe one of them is in Canada. The second category of license that the state will give out is called a processor. And what that does is it authorizes the purchase of marijuana from the grower, and then this group company would take the medical marijuana and turn it into a product, or infuse it into a different type of product. They have to use a secure transporter. They can't, here's the thing that the state put in there too, she can't have interest in a couple of different things, so you can't be a processor and then also a secure transporter. And obviously, you can't be a processor and also a safety compliance facility, because then you'd be testing your own product, and that's not what the state wants. They want to be very tough, secure, and make sure that this is a good, aided, and safe industry. And again, all processing activities have to be reported in the statewide monitoring seed-to-sale system. The next picture is, I kind of liked, at least, it looks like Town Club Pop down there on the bottom, if anybody remembers the old Town Club Pop. But this is, the two pictures on the left are processing centers, and the two on the right, you can't probably see it, but one is peanut butter brittle, peanut brittle, and the other is like flavored soda pops, and those would be infused with marijuana. That's what a processor would do. The next one, the next category are transporters, secure transporters. And this is basically just like your Brink's truck. They transport money, in this case, they transport form, or transport medical marijuana, and possibly money, from different operations. A secure transporter can't have an interest in a grower, processing, provisioning center, or safety compliance center, can't have any, they're there to transport, and that's it. And again, all activity has to be recorded in a statewide monitoring system. The next pictures are basically just what we'd like to you and I, is armored vehicles for whatever, money, that kind of thing. Couple of these there actually say marijuana products on them. Probably the one that had, the category that has had the most concern from people who have called, or people in other communities that have read about, is the provisioning centers, which is basically your sales operation, your corner grocery store that sells marijuana products. And the state law allows the licensing of provisioning centers, and it authorizes the purchase of marijuana from a grower, a processor, or a safety compliance center, and the sale and transfer to qualifying patients, or qualifying resident, or caregivers. So, that's defined under the law. You have to have a prescription to be a, excuse me, to be a patient, and there's caregiver requirements, and possibly Steve could talk about that. Again, you've got to utilize a statewide monitoring system, and in this regard, you can't have an interest in it being a transporter, or a safety compliance facility. In other words, you can't test it, or you can't deliver it to your own place. These are some really nice examples, what I was able to find, of a sales facility. You know, one of the first one, to me, looks like a bakery, you know? You can go in and pick some bakery goods, and this is some variety of medical marijuana, some infused product. The other is more of a waiting room type facility that has some medical marijuana available. And up in the upright corner is what a center could look like. Then we have a safety compliance center, which is basically a testing operation, and they're there to receive marijuana from growers, and basically test it to make sure it's pure, what it's supposed to be, it's not dangerous. Has to be accredited by the state, has to be able to use a validated testing methods. They can't have an interest in a grower, secure transporter, processor, provision center, they're testing, and they're purely there to test. The product has to be shipped back and forth by a secure transporter, and like all the others, they have to utilize a statewide monitoring system, which is basically when it's sold, I mean, when it's grown, it's put into the system, when it's tested, it's put into the system, it's tracked all the way through the process, through sales to whoever buys that product. And if you can see, the pictures on the next page is basically showing a lab, a marijuana testing lab, that's just part of a strip center, a strip shopping center, and saw an individual that's working, that's actually testing, it looks to me like infused products there. Now, what are the next steps for the Township? The Township's got to decide, like I said before, how they want to participate, whether they want to participate, and if they do, what types of facilities they want to allow. Now, applications for the state operating license will be available supposedly to operators beginning December 15th. The Act does prohibit marijuana facilities in any community that doesn't adopt an ordinance for that particular facility type. Again, if Lenox Township doesn't want to participate, simply we don't have to do anything. We're not going to enact it, if we don't enact the ordinance, the state can't issue the license here. If we do wish to allow facilities, we have to decide what, if any, whether we want all, and, you know, how we want to regulate them. And in most cases, that would be through our zoning ordinance itself. Again, this is repeating, but the next, in local regulation, Lenox Township may adopt an ordinance that authorizes one or more of the facilities types. We can place restrictions on the number of each facility type. We can say you're allowed 100 growing operations, and only one dispensary, or the op-see, or that we don't want any dispensaries, but will allow growing and testing. We can replace the restrictions on the zoning districts, other than what the state says on our growing, that we could allow it, have to allow it in industrial or agriculture. We could say that our provisioning centers can only go into a business district, or a commercial district, and those kind of things. And our testing facilities have to be in an industrial, or research, or office district. Those are the types of things that a Township could do. We could determine a Township approval process, what that steps might be, whether it just be permitted by a writer, but we call in zoning a special, a special lady's approval process, which is a little bit more involved, and involves public hearings and that. We could place distancing requirements on each of the uses, distance from a school, 1,000 feet, so let's say, or distance from another operator, so that they're not clustered and causing a problem. And then we can also provide restrictions on, to help prevent potential nuisances, like hours of operation, signage, noise, those kinds of things. So, those are all within the ability of the Township in passing their zoning ordinance. The last page, the last couple pages here, is an actual excerpt from a Township in mid-Michigan, Pinconning Township, which has adopted their regulations already. And this just shows, it gives you an idea of what type of zoning language that they have used, and this is not necessarily what we're going to use, but this is the types of things they would, they are allowing. They're allowing growers, but they're saying they only want growers Class A, so they're saying they only want those growers that are 1,500 plants or more. So, what they're really saying is they don't want the small operations, they want the big operations, and that's what they're going to stick with. But they're going to also allow all the others, the processors, the safety centers, provisioning, secure transporters. But then under number two, they start to restrict what their, how many they allow. Growers Class A, they're allowed 25, processors 25, provisioning centers they're going to allow 10, safety compliance centers 2, secure transporters permits they allow 4. Now, why, how they picked that, I wasn't privating that information, but to the best of their ability, and they determined that this would be best for their community. Now, on the next page, it kind of adds those requirements to, if we were going to allow these, what kind of conditions might there be? And Pinconning Township is stating that the, a provisioning center, distribution center can't be open, I mean, has to be open only between the hours of AP, excuse me, can't be open between 8 p.m. and 8 a.m., so they're restricting hours. In this case too, in Pinconning's case, they're saying that no commercial medical marijuana facility should be located closer to 1,000 feet to any school, church, university, hospital, or university church, house of worship, those kind of things, public and private park. And then on the, they have restrictions on, towards the bottom, signage, nuisance type of things, so... Steve, can I have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I was going to chime in once you're, yes, you're through. Yeah, I've got a few things I'd like to go over, if you don't mind, I'm going to stand up and head over here a little bit. So, you know, I was sitting here, listening to Steve present, and we did this, like we said, what was it, about 45 days ago, or maybe two months ago, something like that? And we got into the law. I gave a presentation on the law, where we've been, and where we are now. And I'm not going to rehash all that, but I'm sitting here, listening to Steve, and, you know, thinking about our new law that we have in Michigan, and I was recollecting back to right after the 2008 law went into effect, and it was, medical marijuana was all new in Michigan, and I remembered a meeting, that I was in a Township that'll remain unnamed, but these two gentlemen had called and asked to come in and meet about wanting to do, you know, a medical marijuana facility in that particular Township, and they came in, sat down with me and the supervisor, and the planning director in that community, if it's not Steve. And these two gentlemen were dressed nicely, like me, they sat down at the table, and they each passed a card across the table introducing themselves. One card said that the gentleman's name was Peanut Butter. The other card said that the gentleman's name was Captain Kirk. Why? At the time, I didn't realize it, but as I got more and more familiar with this, they were afraid. Here they are, in a government building, police stations right next door, they're coming in, and they want to sell medical marijuana. They don't know what kind of reception they're going to get. They hear that it's still legal under federal law. They don't know, and back at that time, it was the Wild West, nobody knew how townships and cities were going to respond to individuals who wanted to enter into this type of provisioning for patients and whatnot. And I sat here, and I thought about that, and juxtaposed it to what we have now, which is sitting here in an open meeting at a Township Hall with a law that is much better than what we had before, in my humble opinion, because it covers a lot of these issues about safety and security, tracking. The detail of our new law is extraordinary, and I don't think that the public necessarily understands that very well. So, for those of you who couldn't attend the last meeting, if you have an opportunity and are interested, certainly you can find that information, and we can help make that available to you on what that new law is all about, and Steve touched on a lot of the points here. Look, it's totally different now. We've learned a lot, both government officials, elected officials, guys like me who spend their career helping communities work through these issues, and residents, and people in the industry. Even people in the, before this new law, had no idea what the real law said, and what they were required and not required to do. There was a lot of innuendo, and rumors, and false information out there, telling people you can do acts, but really, it was illegal. And some people ran into problems in a lot of court cases, that's part of what I presented last time, that the old law resulted in a wave of a bunch of court cases that came down. And a lot of individuals, for right or wrong, or unlucky or lucky, got involved in criminal charges, and lawsuits, and so on and so forth, because of that lack of clarity in that law. And this law, hopefully, will be a lot better. But that's one of the things that I think is important to recognize, we have a new law, and we have these different types, five different types of licenses for five different types of facilities, that could be established, all or some of them, in communities across Michigan. And we don't know how a number of aspects of these new laws are going to be interpreted by different communities, by the state. And that's a key thing, the state is adopting administrative regulations. The licensing board has been appointed, took quite a while to get it appointed, and they're in place, and they're getting their legs underneath them, and supposedly by December 17th, they're going to have these administrative regulations put into place. The Liquor Control Commission has had administrative regulations for decades. This is new, this new board is going to have to work from the ground up. Probably are looking at regulations from other states, trying to learn from that, and seeing what works here under our law. They have a lot of work to do. Whether they get it done by December 17th remains to be seen, but that's the date, as many of you probably know, that licenses can first be issued by this state licensing board. They can't be issued before that. So, none of these five types of facilities are legal at this point, until those licenses are issued and processed through the licensing board. And in townships and cities and villages across the state, they're not legal until those communities individually adopt ordinance as allowing them under the state law, which they don't have to do. So, not all communities are going to adopt ordinance, as many of them may play a wait-and-see. At a minimum, I think it's important, and we're all anxious, everybody involved in the industry, and on the Township side is anxious to see what the state comes up with with the regulations. We need to be careful and cognizant of the fact that those regulations may impact on what we do at the local level, in terms of allowing or not allowing certain types of facilities in the community. Every community is different. Lenox Township is different than Chesterfield Township, which is different than Sterling Heights, which is different than Detroit. Everybody has to do what fits for their community. So, how many folks here are from our residents that live in Lenox Township? Can you raise your hands? Okay. How many people own existing businesses in Lenox Township? Okay. And so, the remainder are probably interested parties who might be looking to establish some of these facilities, which is great. So, we're all here, and we're all talking. The idea is, the board with the planning commission, some planning commissioners are here, are going to try and find out and figure out what fits for Lenox Township, for our community, for this community, based on what we have here, what the master plan says, what the zoning ordinance says, what the future of the community wants, and that's the idea here, and Supervisor Trombley touched on that. So, I think that's important to keep in mind. So, in adopting the types of ordinances that Steve was talking about, the first question is whether we do it in Lenox Township, whether we permit any of these types of facilities in Lenox Township. That's the threshold question. If the answer to that is no, then we can stop there. Might need to adopt an ordinance that says... Might need to adopt an ordinance that says, we're not approving these types of facilities in Lennox Township. They don't work, they don't fit. But other than that, that it stops there, it can be reconsidered anytime in the future. Things change. Township amends its zoning ordinance regularly. We just did one Monday night and a change to the zoning ordinance. So things change. But that's the first question, whether we do it. Second question is, well, if we're going to do it, how do we do it? Right? How do we do it? Where do we do it? Where in the community do these different types of facilities go? And that takes a lot of work to figure out. And that's what the board was talking about. And of course, they're going to look, they live and breathe, the planning commission, the township board, ZBA lives and breathes planning and zoning in this community, but always listens to its residents and its businesses in terms of figuring out what fits for the community. I know they're going to do that, that's why they're holding so far two of these open houses. So as for the future, there are a few things that beyond the state administrative regulations that we're waiting to see or might be seeing. We don't know when the first license will be issued. It's an unknown. We don't know what will happen with the old 2008 law for caregivers and medical marijuana patients. Obviously, the patients are going to continue to exist, but the caregivers, right now, they continue to exist in tandem with the new law. And Steve pointed out a section in the new law that talks about the ability of caregivers to go to provisioning centers and get their medical marijuana for their patients there. If they want to, they'll be able to do that, and so will the patients, of course. But it provides them a source. One of the big questions about those caregivers was, where do they get the seeds? Where do they start growing the marijuana from? For those who've been involved, they recognized that issue, I see a few smiles. It was mysterious under the old law. Now we know. Now we know how it gets going. So another big question is, will anything change in terms of enforcement at the federal government level? Under our former president, he put down a directive that said, we're not going to enforce the federal laws. Under federal law, marijuana is illegal, regardless of whether the state allows it. The feds can come in, close down even these licensed facilities if they want to. It's illegal under federal law. But the standing order to the Attorney General from the president was, and as I understand it, still remains to be, that we're not going to enforce that against medical marijuana as long as we're following the rules and they're not monstrous operations that are not following the rules. We're, we got other things to spend the resources on. Is that going to change? It's something to think about in the future. And the township needs to be thinking about that too, and I'll advise the board about that as we proceed. There's a lot of talk about just legalizing recreational marijuana, just legalizing it completely. And that again, will change things. I would imagine that similar types of licensing would be implemented even for, if, if there was a transition over to recreational marijuana. And then like I mentioned, there's the unknown, court cases and interpretations and things of that nature. So with that, you know, the, the main thrust of this meeting in open house was to discuss the different types of facilities. And Steve did a great job of that. And I think drilling down into that, you can kind of get the feel by some of the pictures that when we're talking about a provisioning center, you saw some of the storefronts for those. They look very similar to any storefront in the community, CVS or, you know, any type of general, they can be in shopping sectors and things of that nature, or they can be standalone. And the township can adopt regulations that designates where they are, how they look, whether they're standalone, whether they can be part of the existing strip mall, things of that nature. And those are decisions to be made. But you can see how they look, and they're going to be about the size that you saw generally. But there is, under the state law, there's no limitation on the size of those facilities. That's left to the local government to regulate if it allows them. With the grow facilities, depending on what type of license is granted at the state, they become potentially very large, or they can be relatively small, depending on the type of licenses granted. And then as you saw with the example from Pinconning, as Steve explained, the township can designate how big they want them to get. They can allow perhaps only Class A licenses, but not B or C and so forth. That's something again, for the township to consider and for you to be thinking about as you provide your thoughts and input to the board. And remember that it's not just, there's all sorts of things on, out there about how to grow medical marijuana plants, how much space you need. Those in a lot of ways are business decisions and, you know, I don't know, I like craft beer, I don't, I drink all sorts of beer, but I enjoy a good, you know, brew pub now and then. And I've talked to some brew masters and they all have their own recipes. And they all have their own way of doing it. And the way that they do it might require more space or less space, or different lighting or ventilation, or different heating and different electrical. Same goes from everything I've learned from the industry, because I attend seminars that are, that where folks from the industry are educating and providing information, and it sounds like to me, that'll, you'll see a lot of that. So growing operations are going to differ, but they're all going to have lighting, they're all going to need ventilation, they're all going to need security, they're going to have a business side of it. So just like any industrial facility, you're going to have your offices most likely in the same building. You're going to have different rooms for different stages of the growing perhaps. You're going to have different types of lighting. There can be all sorts of different types of lighting provided, depending on the preference of the grow operation and their investment. And all of these, and, and there's going to be fire suppression, all of these things are going to have to fall under things like the township's fire code, the state's construction code, and, and, you know, various types of things. The electrical code, that's the one I was searching for, heating and ventilation, heating and air conditioning, all those sorts of things, all have to be regulated, are regulated. They don't have to be, they are regulated if they're permitted in the township. Those codes are all going to apply. And the electrical is one of the areas of high concern for the fire department and will be receiving information from them if the township decides to proceed. So the grow operations could vary drastically. And, and as we proceed in evaluating this, need to consider that. The processing facilities, you saw some pictures of those, probably from all appearances, will be smaller than a grow operation, but perhaps larger in many instances than the provisioning centers. They're also generally, I wouldn't think be open to the public, same as grow facilities. So you have a different type of use there. Where does that fit in? You know, in the, in the processing centers, you saw people in some of those pictures with white suits on, like they were scientists. Same with the testing, safety compliance facilities. You saw the white suits, you saw computers, you saw what looked to be like chemists working on this, much like a laboratory use. Under our zoning ordinance, we have laboratory, industrial type uses, areas in the township that are zoned for that. Is that the place for these and those types of facilities? So these are the, this, this is the type of consideration that's going in. These are the types of facilities that this is what they're going to look like, is what we're trying to get across this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the supervisor here and ask, unless Steve has anything else he wants to add. But turn it back over to the supervisor and I think if, if there are board questions or questions from the public.
Thank you, Mr. Jopik. Appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to the public that's here. Any questions, comments, concerns? If you would, Mr. Jopik, get out that microphone, please. Just please state your name for the record and, if you have any questions, comments. Ms. Van, could you go up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cheryl Hayes-Gasson, and we have a startup business with an experienced medical marijuana grower. And he does organic grows. We are possibly looking for some ag land to do outdoor grows, reinvest the profits, and then bring it back into, and do possibly a superstructure for an indoor grow if it's zoned in ordinances, if the variances that are necessary are arrived. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments, questions? Yes, sir. This is what helps us. I really like to encourage you, this is what helps us determine on which path to take and how to go forward with this. So appreciate this. Thank you very much.
Hi, good, good evening, everybody. My name is Peanut Butter and, I'm just joking, John Finstrom. So we currently operate a few, a few licensed facilities in cities that have adopted ordinances, you know, under the current, you know, Act 2008. And we also have a licensed dispensary in Detroit. So I would just like to kind of speak to the board members of, you know, to, to help educate you, you know, maybe if you guys like to take a tour, see what a grow operation looks like, to educate you more before you make a decision, see a dispensary. When I got in the business about six years ago, you know, I'll be honest, I wasn't in for the money. And then, but I'm an ex-cancer survivor, at one point they told me I had six months to live. And then started to have patients come into our store and they have glaucoma, seizures, diabetes, cancer, epilepsy, you know, it's a pretty, pretty crazy what this plant can do for the healing part of the plant. Yeah, you know, there's both sides of the, the lucidogenic side that people, you know, get, you know, get the THC side, but there's also the CBD side, it's pretty amazing. So I would just, you know, before the board makes a decision, I'd like them to really, you know, educate themselves, maybe take a tour, see what these places are doing. And we have, we have many, many patients that are getting very, you know, benefits from this, from this product. Even on the, even just the smoking side for ADHD, you know, sleeping, pain, getting off the opiates. I did print out some packages too, showing some, some crime, crime percentages in other states that have opened dispensaries or provisioning centers, you know, the statistics on that. Also, also there's a 35% like opiates less addiction in communities that have licensed the medical marijuana dispensaries. So there's a lot of good information out there. I go to all the shows out in Vegas, Oakland, all the big marijuana conferences, I'm going to be a speaker in the Vegas show, just about how to start up companies and stuff like that in this business. So, so I guess I'm opening my arms to you guys. You guys would like to come take a tour, see our facilities, learn more, I can pass out these packages to you and, and go from there. And I don't know if you guys are aware of all the tax benefits too, you know, 30% going to the, to the state, 30% going to the county, 25% going to the local municipality. I'm sure you guys have read all that stuff, I'm sure you're aware of all that, but there's also that benefits too, from it, from, from a city side. So, so our group would love to be able, we all live locally here, we'd love to be able to do business in, in your city, hopefully eventually. So, so, but any questions, anything that I'm missing, please, I'd love to answer them. So, that's all I got. I'll pass out these packages.
Thank you very much, sir, for comment. Another poll comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chris Aiello. I'm an attorney, I'm a member of the State Bar of Michigan Medical Marijuana Committee. I also sit on the board of directors of a trade group called Michigan Cannabis Development Association, where our philosophy is that the emerging market that is upon us is a market that's open, hopefully for the next two years, just to Michiganders, and to protect the rights of smaller business mom and pop shops that want to get into business. And every one of the five licenses I represent, individuals that want to do business in Lennox, possibly construction of some new buildings for a dispensary and to either purchase, rehab, or erect a few grow facilities. You have the infrastructure out here with all the water and sewer up 26 Mile, there's plenty of land. They want to bring business to you, they want to pay their taxes here, they want to pay real estate taxes, help share the burden with the offsetting costs for the permit fees and the amount of money that you're able to charge under the Act, which is $5,000 per facility. So opportunities here for Lennox to flourish. We have a lot of land to open the doors with a controlled regulatory scheme to raise some money for your township, for an emerging market. And it's catching on like wildfire throughout the entire state. It's Mr. Rosati, we're catching. Yeah. Townships are opting in all over, cities in Macomb County will be opting in very shortly. You have everywhere from Detroit to Lansing to Ypsilanti that are already licensing certain dispensaries. Pittsfield Township that allows grow facilities without a cap on the number of plants. It's going on all over Gaylord, Pinconning, Traverse City. So it's happening everywhere and we hope that you can get your regulatory scheme in, in place as soon as possible and that you can attract business and bring it to Lennox. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Jopik.
A question, or the prior gentleman? You know, you mentioned the water on 26 Mile and, and of course, there's sewers as well. How do those play into decisions? Maybe we could educate the board a little bit on how do those play into decisions by, you know, grow facilities, processing facilities and so forth, and whether or not to locate locations? Having public water, public sewer, how relevant or important is that vis a vis well systems?
Well, systems, I, I would defer to John, who knows a lot more about that, but I can tell you that it's a lot more difficult to farm and raise your products in, in well water. They have a RO system that takes the well water and distills it to some degree. Using city water, which we have all the way up here, helps, is, is a lot better. John, I think you could, John can.
Usually the well water has about 600, 900 parts per million in it already, so we have to take that out of it first and do the best in the, you know, the more organic for the plants. So city water is easy to work with, plus the well water. Sometimes the water needs, we have, it's hard for the wells to keep up, so we have to, you know, that kind of delays the process and makes our operations a little more difficult. That's answering your question.
How about sewer and public drains and things like that?
Sewer, there's not much, because most of the water and everything gets, gets used by the plants. So it's just, it's just, you know, so there's not much, there's not much waste, I guess, is the answer to your question. But the, but the drainage and stuff, I mean, that's, that's simple drainage, nothing more than a normal household or toilet would use, it's not, not a big issue, because we're not using, we're not draining a lot, we're using, all the plants are using most of that.
If I could expand on that too, it was discussed in our last town hall meeting. We have a need for sewer water customers. Right now, we have sewer up 26 Mile Road in the Gresha Quarter, from 26 to 31 Mile Road. And basically, I think at the time, we were looking at 16 customers. We're losing roughly a million and a half dollars a year on our sanitary and water lines. It's very expensive to hook up, our sewer is roughly $85 a lineal foot. Our water is 25, and we don't have customers. We need customers. We have an issue right now with a sewer break that's going to be very costly to us. We're lacking in that revenue department. Our revenue now basically comes from the landfill, state to state prison, and the bay run development facility. So we need to expand our services to businesses and any and all types of businesses that we can try to attract to our community to help us support that cost. These would be one of those types of businesses that would help us maintain that system. We have a fairly new system, but the railroads maintenance repairs to those systems. So it is a great expense, probably the number one expense to the township.
To comment on Mr. Trombley's factual discussion here, there are many cities and townships in this state that barely meet their debt obligations on an annual basis. And most of the constituents and citizens in their cities don't build that. Most of it is all legacy costs.
Unless everything goes right, without any sinkholes, water line breaks, sewer rigs.
Most are still borrowing to stay above it. If you're, if the community has the opportunity to raise revenue, you should jump all over it. There are still cities that are not guided by good, honest individuals such as Mr. Trombley that will tell you. that will tell you your problems upfront. Most council and township supervisors and that will hide these facts during their tenure as long as they can, because they don't want to talk about raising taxes, and nobody does. But it's here, it's today's day and age, you will see here, I predict, in the next two to three years, cities very close to this city, reaching out to the state saying we can no longer meet our debt obligations. It's coming, it's coming to Macomb County quickly. And don't let Lennox fall into that, raise revenue, open your doors to other businesses, not just this, but as many businesses as you can travel.
Mr. Trumbull?
Yes, sir.
May I share a comment? I had a brief discussion with the fire chief this past week, and he had indicated that a grow facility would have to meet sprinkler, a certain set of standards, and it was his opinion, he was doubtful that a well could support the sprinkling requirements needed in that type of facility, so.
There are some cities that restrict the size of their buildings, such that sprinkling does not apply. Right? So, yes. A lot of cities in the state have ordinances restricting the size of the building, so that sprinkling doesn't apply, and that's left up to the fire marshal within the city.
You always got fire suppression.
Sir, can I come to the platform? Appreciate it.
You always get the changes, right? Lennox, you got fire suppressions too, for bigger square foot buildings, they just suck all the oxygen that they have to buy, as soon as it starts, as soon as it starts igniting, oh, it already goes off, it's super, super sensitive. And then you got the little sensors everywhere.
I think the criticism around the fire chief's comments come from an incident we had just recently, where they were called out in a large structure fire, and half the building, unbeknownst to them, was full of marijuana. And it wasn't a regulated site by us, and make no mistake, this is throughout our community, in different areas now, unregulated, other than the home grow. So it's here, and the feedback that we've received so far is to try to regulate it and control it. And that could have been a very dangerous situation for a fire department with that structure fire.
Yes, sir.
In other cities, we have licensed growing facilities going on to say, proceed your electrical, you know, rough inspection, I think, so the building has no more chance of getting caught on fire than the other building, it's been through the proper inspections by the city. So as long as the inspections are right, you know, everything's done right, then the building is just operating, the building's like its else, has lights, has air, it's like every other building does, just the only difference is there's plants inside it, that's all.
Thank you. Other comments, please? Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, everybody, I'm Natasha, I am part of a collective here in Macomb County. I have helped out in the dispensary part of the medical marijuana, the grow part of the medical marijuana. I've done this a million times, but it's normally one-on-one. I usually talk to patients one-on-one, a lot of patients I've met that are very sick, a lot of family members I've been able to help out. When a patient first comes in, a lot of people are new to it, and they don't understand all of the benefits from it, they, everybody thinks, hey, it's a plant that just gets you high. But there's actually over 480 elements in the plant, and every plant, well, there's hundreds of different strains of plants, and every plant has a different medical benefit to it. There's, you know, they say THC, but there's also the THCA, which has a lot of medical benefits, you can't get high off of CBD, CBDA, you can't get high off of these things. It inhibits cancer cell growth, neuroprotective, promotes bone growth, reduces seizures and convulsions, reduces the risk of artery blockage, regulates blood pressure, blood sugar. I've helped a lot of patients, my niece has a rare form of epilepsy, as long as she's on the CBD, which is not psychoactive, she has no seizures, as soon as she stops taking it, she runs out of it. A couple weeks ago, she fell into two seizures right away. I have another niece that has tracheal malformation, her brain's literally all out of her skull, and she suffers from really bad migraines. And I have to tell my nieces, you have to go down to Detroit to get your medication, because you can't get it out here in Macomb County. There is no dispensaries, there's nowhere out here to get it. I have a patient, she has a leg amputated, she's mid-sixties, 67 years old, I believe. She takes the bus all the way from Hall Road in Grash, she goes all the way down to Southern Mile in Grash, on a wheelchair, she goes all the way down there by herself to get her medication. There's some plants that only grow a little bit of flower, but those are the plants that this patient specifically needs. So, as a caregiver, I have to grow a lot more plants for this patient, because she needs a lot more products. This plant only grows a couple ounces, that I have to grow a lot of plants just for her. There's other plants that can grow a pound, but they're very low in the elements that this specific patient needs. So, I look at every patient and their specific medical needs, how can I help this patient specifically? They have, personally, I have degenerative arthritis, bulging disc, a pinched nerve in my spine between my C3 and my C6, narcolepsy, cannibality, syncope, fibromyalgia, I suffer from migraines, manic depression, and all the pharmaceuticals get me sick. I've seen a lot of family members get addicted, go to worse drugs because of the pharmaceuticals. Medical marijuana, it's a natural element. We have an endocannabinoid system inside of us, our body already produces cannabinoid. So if your body already produces it, it's nothing but a natural herbal supplement. It's like taking any other herbal supplement around you that grows naturally from the ground. It's not being created by a science lab, you know? Everything is tested. It's not only tested for the elements that's in it, the potency of it, but it's also tested for mold, mildew, bacteria, and we send everything out to be tested, because we don't want to hurt anybody. We want to help everybody, we want to give everybody their best chance. You know, I've had an older patient, about 80 years old, come to me, he suffers from anxiety, and he came to me and said, I need sativa. But sativa isn't actually, it's an upper, and it would give him worse anxiety. So he's an uneducated man, and I had sent him down and educated him on all the different varieties of products that we carry, and what I think would help him the most. And I think that's the problem, is a lot of these dispensaries, a lot of these facilities and caregivers out there, they're not educating their patients, they're not, they're not teaching them the different elements that would help their specific needs. We want to educate everybody, we want to, we want to tell everybody about the different elements, and hey, you don't, you know, you have PTSD, you need an indica, you need something to calm you down, to relax your nerves. You have manic depression, you need a sativa. For my manic depression, I smoke a string called Sunshine, and it says it brings sunshine into your life even on a gloomy day. And in Michigan, we have a lot of gloomy days, and it puts a smile on my face, makes me giggle. The worst side effects that I've ever heard of is you get hungry, you get sleepy, it makes you giggle and laugh. And I've never heard anything besides that. They say inhaling it to your lungs is bad, but how is that bad when it inhibits cancer cell growth? It stops the cancer cell from, well, it takes, it takes a tumor, it shrinks it, it stops the blood flow from going to the tumor, it stops new cells from producing, you know, so it does actually the exact opposite. But putting it into a blunt tobacco wrap, that's tobacco, now that may cause cancer, and that's what I have to educate my patients on. You want to do all natural, all organic, you know, flushing the strain properly, using proper nutrients on these strains, you know, making sure that, like I said, that they're all tested, and they're not going to hurt any of our patients. We just want to help people. And like I said, I don't want to send my 12-year-old niece, or my 80-year-old grandmother, all the way down to Detroit, when they can go right next door to CVS down the street and pick it up, when I can provide it right here for them in my backyard. So, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments.
Yes, Mr. Javich. Just to follow up on a couple of things, thank you very much, you don't need that, but, you know, we talked about the safety compliance facilities that are licensed under the new statute. A lot of things that you talked about, you know, the reason for that license and that type of facility is to do a lot of the things that you were talking about, which is to get in compliance and quality control and things of that nature. Because not all caregivers care as much as you perhaps about those things. But across the state, that's part of what this new law is implementing. So that's one of the types of facilities that perhaps might be working to locate here.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Joe. By May, I'm going to have at least one degree in agriculture science, possibly two if I decide to have no social life. The closest plant to cannabis is actually like a tomato plant, so you're almost asking yourself here, would I allow 1,500 plant, tomato plant license to be available? I mean, it's cultivated the same way, the plant propagation is the same way, almost everything is done the exact same thing, even the nutrients are basically the same except in different amounts. So that's one thing about the plant first, and secondly, like to touch on what Natasha was saying, there are actually some strains that have like 20% CBD, and the THC is under 1%, it's close to 0.1, 0.2% or lower. It would have no psychoactive effects on even a small child. But just because of the classification of that, of that family, that's why it's illegal. Like, you could get passed it out here, and nobody would get high. No, everybody would probably be able to pass a drug test that was testing for THC, just because the main component in it would be CBD. And for somebody like me, I mean, I've had relatives that have died from cancer, and I do like a lot of work with like youth groups and stuff, so to me, that's, that's actually something that I actually want to pursue, is pursuing strains like that. Like, there's even strains that you guys could look up that have been on the news, like Charlotte's Web and Catatonic, that show extremely high levels of CBD. Like, Charlotte's Web, the guy, his daughter was, his daughter or his friend's daughter was having multiple seizures per day, they started giving her the CBD oil, and she stopped seizures. There's extra reports that show that at least 33% of kids with these seizures stop having seizures once they ingest the CBD, which again, has no psychoactive effects. And that's 33% of people that are willing to admit it. In all the states where something like this is illegal, nobody's going to come forward and say, yes, I'm growing marijuana, I'm giving my kids CBD, or I'm having it shipped from out of state. They're just going to sit there and keep their mouth shut about it, because they're scared. They don't want to go to jail for something like this. You know, so that's more to think about, because it's not just, you know, what everybody thinks, this is just, you know, what everybody was raised to think. But now more and more information is coming out about like different things that you can do with it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. I really appreciate these comments, and one thing, just before you start, sir, we were touring, we had a discussion about this, we filmed the first meeting, and we were hesitant about filming the meeting, so that it wouldn't deter some people that didn't want to be known, that supported this on camera, but I have to thank you for, for being willing to do this and give your comments tonight, thank you very much. This helps us get it out to the rest of the public to show what the feelings of everybody is, so, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is also Joe, and I've been in this township for 35 years plus. And I can only say, listening to what I'm hearing today, if something helps somebody in what I've known, that I've had to do in 35-plus years for licensing, if it helps people, and if it helps our township, I have, I can't even imagine something like this not being acceptable. So, I think we should really think about this, because if it's going to bring revenue to this township that we desperately need, and it helps people, it's a win-win.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. One other comment on that too, after the last meeting, after the camera went off, we had a number of people that had sat in the audience, that approached us up here and gave us positive feedback too, and I asked them, I said, please, next time speak, and there was a little unwillingness, but we did receive a lot of positive feedback, and the stories that we've heard about family members, or friends, or it's been over mommy, that everybody knows somebody that this has affected somehow through a medical type issue. So this, this really helps. Yes, ma'am, would you like to say something again? Please.
My name is Cheryl, again, and when Natasha was speaking, she was speaking about me when she told her story, her personal story. I, I don't know how I could live without the medical marijuana that I, and I use very small amounts, because I don't need, and every single molecule of this, of the cannabis is utilized by my body, even when it has significant levels of THC, because my body needs that. I have chronic pain, I have, and the whole laundry list that Natasha talked about. And I just, this is green gold, this is opportunity, and I think that your community is a very, very progressive place, and we would like to do business with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, sir.
One last comment too, about property values. So as we've witnessed in some cities that we have licensed facilities in, a year and a half of them are buying those properties, they've gone up almost 10 times in value, but the ordinance there is friendly to the, to the people that are in this business. So that's another thing to think about as you make your decision, what are those property values? And last night, I don't know if you guys even watched it, but The Profit was on, and it was about, the show was titled Marijuana Millionaires, and so they were showing how, you know, the small, small community out in California, you know, very small town in California, was one of the first ones opting into licensing there, and now their property value is going for a million dollars an acre. So just things to think about that too, the tax revenue, you know, your, you know, you do assessments, stuff like that for, for property, that's also part of a big thing to think about also as you make your decision, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Nudie. Hi. Jan Rayno? I know that this is a forward-thinking community in Lennox, and this is a good thing for the community. I really think it's shameful that the federal government would deem this illegal, but yet all the states are making it legal. It's just, it's like crazy to, to think that, you know, the federal government thinks it's illegal, but the, the, the states are legalizing it. I think it's a great thing, it's forward-thinking in this community, and I think it's, it's something that is going to be our future, you know? And it's not like a bunch of potheads going to be walking around like zombies around here, they do that, scare them, well, not potheads, but zombies, I mean. But I mean, it's, it's good, it's forward-thinking, it's good for the community, and I really think that it's going to take off, not only in this community, but it's going to take off in all the other communities. And if you don't jump on it, the other communities around you will.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Other comments? Any questions? Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir. My name is Michael Smith, and I represent an estate group that operates in six different states right now, and they consider themselves state of the art, they compare themselves to Merck, pharmaceutical company, find the largest in the world. And that is because they understand, this is probably will help the constituents to make a decision on this then, when you purchase a bottle of aspirin, you expect every tablet to have the same ingredients and the same milligrams of those ingredients. every tablet to have the same ingredients and the same milligrams of those ingredients. Their medical marijuana process is exactly the same. You expect the same strain and the same amount of content in that strain. So, think of that for a second. You buy a bottle of pills, you eventually someday, I would say for the next five to 10 years, you'll buy something, and CBS will be comparable to that when it comes to the medical marijuana segment, where they'll scan it, you'll be a patient, you'll have a prescription, and you'll buy that right at the store. Think about that for forward-thinking, and as constituents of this township, think about that when voting this in for favor of this.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments?
Do we have time for networking amongst ourselves?
Sure, we'll remain open. Definitely open for discussion still after the fact, too. At this time, is there any board members that would like to make any statements?
Not at this time.
At this time. Mr. Jappick?
The only final thoughts I have is that I don't know if there's what's in store for the future for the township. I'm not sure we're going to be discussing that. But at a minimum, if the township does decide to proceed with some sort of an ordinance, there would be at least one other public hearing. I know most of the comments tonight were from folks in the industry who are looking at potentially locating here. We've probably heard from one or two at least residents. That's it tonight, but there will be mandatory public hearing, at least one through the planning commission, maybe more if there is an ordinance that's put forward. And I imagine there may be some other information, maybe some concerns coming out at that time. I know, you know, in my experience, working with other communities, there are concerns out there. We're not hearing them here, but there are concerns about various aspects of this. But we're not hearing that yet.
Right. And because this is being taped, and you'll be able to follow this on YouTube also, we have not heard concerns, like you're saying, as of yet. We're elected to vote for the people of our community, based on feedback that we get from the people in our community. We have not heard those concerns. I can tell you, just like this evening, it's been more pro than anything. And the only concern that we thought was minimal was that the residential areas, people were concerned about that. I think Mr. Casson would support that statement, that that's, it's all we've heard. We've been inundated with phone calls on a daily basis, of people wanting to know more about it, look into our community regarding properties, everything. It's been a real hot topic. My concern is that we do the right thing for our community by having these town hall meetings. I think that's the feedback that we need to make, educated decisions. And hopefully, we've educated our public on everything. I think we've covered it all to this point. I think the natural progression is to go forward. Once again, if anybody does have any concerns out there, please bring them to our attention. Any positives, also, please bring them to our attention, so we can keep taking this in as we go forward to make decisions. Any other closing statements?
Mr. Jappick? Just that can be done in writing, phone calls, or hearing the public.
Thank you. Yes. Yes. We will take calls here Monday through Thursday regarding this topic, myself, the planner, township attorneys even available, or any other board members. Well, Mr. Casson, do you have anything in closing?
No.
Really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Thank you. Your comments, questions were fantastic, and appreciate the feedback. So, with that, motion. Thank you. Motion, Madam Clerk, supported by the juror. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.